Hey, good morning. Today is December tenth, twenty twenty four. On this day in nineteen forty one, three days after Pearl Harbor, Richard Fagundes was born. Happy birthday, Richard. Uh, but the world was at unrest at that time, so you came in at a tough time to be born, so.
Looks like an earthquake.
Madam, Madam, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Birthday boy, Richard Fagundes.
He's not here. Here.
Okay, at this time, would you all please rise for invocation of Pastor Lori Niles from Hanford Layton Church of the Nazarene? Good morning, Lori, thank you for coming.
Good morning, thank you for having me. Let's bow together. Lord of all creation, Lord of this universe, we thank you for a group of leaders who are willing to bow in your presence to ask in humility for strength and for wisdom. And we thank you for the gift of servant leadership that allows this group of people to sustain and to and to support life here in the valley. We give you praise for this gift, and we ask that you would help them to make the best decisions for those that they are entrusted to care for. In your name we pray, amen.
In the honor of our board member Fagundes. Board meeting, and I wish you happy birthday, and would be pleased if you would like to.
Well, thank you, Doug. Ready? So.
Yes, it's America.
One of these under God, and this is all with everything in the world.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to unscheduled appearances. Madam clerk, do we have anybody that written notices?
I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker is Jonathan Brewster.
Morning, Mr. Brewster.
Hey.
Are you a council member yet? Not yet, when you're swearing in?
Uh, first Tuesday of January, is that seventh?
Okay.
Yeah, seventh. Um, today I'm here as a DSA president. Um, this weekend, we had a fatal traffic collision at Bargo and Thirteenth. Um, just want to let you guys know that that was the wife of a Hanford Police Department officer. Uh, so I've been in contact with the POA board since Sunday morning. Um, we are currently trying to get a fund, like a GoFundMe, but through PORAC. Um, PORAC takes care of all the fees and all there's like not as many taxes and all that stuff, and it goes statewide. Um, the DSA is going to donate fifteen hundred dollars to him, so if there's any associations within the county that are willing to give towards him, he has four kids. Um, ranges from like sixteen to like six, I think. Um, so just want to let you guys know about that, and then if anybody has any questions and wants to donate personally or as an association, reach out to me. I'll take care of it, um, and go from there. But thoughts and prayers for him.
No, thank you, hang on, hang on a second, so can we put that on our public announcement? From Justin, for Justin, that people can donate?
Sure, once we get the information.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get you guys the link through PORAC, um, because GoFundMe, there's a bunch of surcharges and all kinds of stuff like that. Um, and it's a more reliable source, so we know there's no scams or, and it's going to go to him. I think the GoFundMe is through him, but I don't know who's running it, so, but as soon as the PORAC link or we get the PORAC link, I'll put it on the DSA page and I'll email it to you.
Yeah, and on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, our heart goes out to him and his family, and we wish them all the best.
I will let them know, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Lynch.
He looks familiar, what, did you used to work here?
A long time ago.
A long time ago?
February, it's a long time. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Bill Lynch, uh, forty five oh seven twelfth Avenue, uh, recently retired, so it's great. Um, I want to thank each and one of you for what you do up here every day and 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 taking care of the county, but today I want to thank one particular person, Richard Fagundes. Um, I know this may not be his last meeting, but it's the last meeting I can make, so I just wanted to get up here and publicly thank him for his his leadership, support, and friendship during my time with the Kings County Fire Department. Um, his trust and his, uh, his belief that I could do the job meant a lot to me, and, uh, and I just want to say, Richard, thank you very much for everything you've done for me in my career and my family and and for the fire department, we we truly appreciate it, thank you.
Well, thank you for all the guidance you've given me also through this little sixteen years of tour that I've had here. It's been been great to work with everybody. Yeah, thank you, Richard, I really appreciate it.
So unlike your retirement, I don't need to give him a wife a list of what he needs to do, she's already on top of it.
One thing I got to say, except for Doug.
Thank you, Jim.
Oh, thank you.
The next speaker is Rebecca Bell.
Ms. Bell, good morning.
Is this your last meeting?
I just want to say kudos to everybody that makes these meetings possible to run smoothly. But, um, also to hold people accountable for their jobs. Um, you guys are doing a good job, some of you guys could use a little spit shine and remember us and not yourself. Um, if anybody got offended by that, then they know who I'm talking to, so, um, but anybody that isn't offended, then I'm not talking to you, so. Um, it's just that it's really important to remember what we do to, um, we elect you to help us. And I'm still hoping that you guys hold certain people accountable. Now, one of you guys know, well, actually, you probably should by now, but, um, I might as well just come out and say it. Courtyard Estates, okay? They have been expand extended thousands of dollars. And has anybody checked to see what's going on out there? So far, the only difference is they added security out there. Houses are still sitting there, they're still shorted. They still don't have the four handicap homes. So who's checking up to see what what's going on out there? You still have a bunch of homeless people out there, now it's even more now that COS got disbanded. So, I mean, when they were all congregating over at COS, did they see any more presence downtown in Hanford? I mean, were they less? I mean, did businesses notice a difference when they were congregating at COS? That there were less of a presence and less of a, I mean, not all homeless people are bad people, because some of them, it's not by choice. And it's just the bad ones that harm people and leave a mess. Otherwise, we'd leave them alone, but there are some people that they don't have any choices. So that's why we have to hold accountable the organizations that's supposed to help and make sure that that money goes where it's supposed to. Instead of their side jobs of things that they own, okay? So it's just.
Well, with that, thank you. Uh, it doesn't go unnoticed, uh, I can't talk about it.
Okay, I understand.
And the security guard is ours.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, will there be news to come in the future?
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Okay, well, this may be Supervisor Fagundes' last official board meeting, his wife's having some stuff done, so at this time, I'd like to express my gratitude and, uh, my pleasure working with him for the last fourteen years. And, uh, you know, we don't always vote the same, but we always have respect for each other, and I appreciate that. When we leave here, we might not agree on an issue, but we go back and we could joke around and and talk to each other. I'm going to miss my hugs, he gives me a hug every morning he comes in.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm I'm not going to miss that. I'll stick with my wife.
That's it? No, but I I do, I do appreciate it, it's it's difficult to sit up here, we got five different personalities, we all come different walks of life, and we have our personal feelings on the board, uh, when we vote on issues. And, uh, we don't take it personal, we go back in the back, we can laugh, we could joke and start be and be professional the next week, so. Richard, thank you again for your time served for the people of Kings County. Uh, we wish you all the best in your new endeavors. I think Catherine has a little gift for you, we'll go down the well.
Do I have to take a picture with you?
Yes. You want me to go get the box so you can stand up?
I'm not going to get any more hugs. Come on, sunshine.
What an attitude, man.
Need a box and stand next to you.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
You got everybody? I charged five bucks for these.
Thank you so much. I thank everybody for what they've done to me, it made it possible for me to do what I do, make me who I am on this board. So it's been an honor to work these Bureau of Supervisors office that made you, uh, come to Chinatown times, I get my hat and donut every Tuesday morning. And as far as the board members, you guys have been wonderful. We've got some obstacles to jump, so, so it's been nice, it's been a learning process for me. Thank you again.
I met Mr. Fagundes back in nineteen seventy-three or seventy-four, and we all used to go over by his house, and all my friends lived over there, and he's scared the hell out of us, he come into his work truck. But his family loved him, and, uh, he was crotchety old man, but, uh, he's come a long way.
You mean he was crotchety fifty years ago?
Well, he was bad, yeah. Yeah, we scared the hell out of us.
I remember my my two oldest and you were the terror of Hanford.
Yeah, anyway.
The only problem with my with me and your dad, he had one. Yeah. Thank you, anyway.
No, thank you, thank you.
It's charity, I'm on a way.
Yeah, go ahead as well.
All the time, in case he's not here next time.
Yeah, so anything bad.
I won't, I won't, I I do, uh, you know, you and I, we started on the same time sixteen years ago, and I never knew you until the day, um, we both got sworn in here today. But, uh, the last sixteen years has truly been an honor to serve side by side with you. Uh, everyone here knows Soup Fagundes is a man of integrity and and honor, and, uh, he's always kept his word. Um, and one thing, I I hope you don't mind me sharing this, but, you know, in sixteen years, like, we all know there's some ups and downs, sometimes there's some battles and but, uh, there's been at least three times where, uh, uh, Soup Fagundes has called me like eight o'clock that night on Tuesday night, just say, hey, young man, I want to tell you, I'm very proud of you and how, you know, how you held yourself today, and and, um, that meant a lot to me on those phone calls when you when you would call like that, those were, uh, pick-me-ups, uh, more than you ever know. And it just shows, uh, your character and that your career here is something that should be recognized, not just by the county, but the state and the federal government, so thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you so much, sir. There's some days I didn't like what you said, though.
Those were the days I didn't get the phone call. I get a nasty text message.
Good thing I don't text much. No, it's been, it's been great work, like I said, I'm working with all you, I know I sound like a broken record, but, you know, our departments, I've worked closely with the departments that I work with mainly, and we've had, some of us had breakfast together to talk about issues that we've had to discuss some of our own family issues, and that makes me feel good because they have, uh, uh, faith in me to be able to talk to me like that. And I wanted everybody here to know, on this board, to know who I am over and above this board. You can't work with anybody if you don't know them personally. And that's been done, and I appreciate it very much, there's there's no words to say thank you to everybody here, every department. You too, Ken. That's the backbone that kept my back straight and without a brace, right there. Thank you.
Shirley two, right? I'm Shirley two.
Shirley one, Shirley two.
Supervisor Fagundes, you know, I'm only two years in, but I'm going to miss you a lot. Uh, you, uh, I don't know what my mother is going to do without her supervisor. My mother doesn't call me, she calls him.
I told her to contact you now.
No, you know, uh, right out of the gates, I I loved it because, uh, his words of wisdom were, listen, listen, and listen. And I try, and I have, and I thank you, and I and I will, thank you.
It's hard to listen when you don't be, you don't be quiet.
Well, it's going to be quite a change for me now, I'm going to go say yes, dear.
Yeah. Well, you're always welcome back.
Thank you so much, everybody that I've worked with or had anything to do with in any department. So I know we've had some issues to go through way back with Bob Henry, way back with Waste Management, that was just no, it started out with with the crash, but everything worked out.
Well, Richard, you may be retired, but you're, uh, always going to be invited back. Because, uh, just as with Bill and some of the others, uh, in this room, uh, they're always, uh, uh, invited because we always need somebody to flip pancakes, cook eggs.
Um, I knew there was a reason.
Exactly. So you might hang up everything else, but, uh, keep that apron handy. And, uh, I think there probably should be an apron around here somewhere that says, uh, keep your hands out of your pockets, because I think.
That was the story.
Yeah. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Okay, we're good. Anybody in the audience like to add anything to it? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and conduct our business as usual, uh, we'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes. Uh, report on a close session from regular meeting, December third, twenty twenty four.
There's nothing to report.
Okay, item B, uh, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, December third, twenty twenty four, moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, five in favor, uh, we'll go on now to consent counter, all items listed on a consent counter are enacted by one motion unless a board member like to pull an item separately.
Move is presented.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Five in favor, we'll move on now to regular items, and it's item A, Information Technology Department, and we have, uh, Evan Jones, good morning, Evan.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the board, I was supposed to follow that. I have before you today a request, uh, for you to approve the document retention schedule for the Purchasing Division and adopt a resolution codifying it. The Purchasing Division is now responsible for the overseeing of procurement of goods and services for the county, but is also responsible for the storage and retention of records, not only for the county departments and some special agencies, but for its own use such as bids and requests for proposals. Currently, the Purchasing Division is not in compliance with laws regarding retaining documents. With the purchasing being only two staff members for the county, the retention aspect was just not on our radar. Thankfully, today, I am before you to correct that. With your approval of the schedule and a resolution stating as much, a retention schedule will be in place, and it will serve to be used on a continuous basis as documents fall out of time allotted for them to be kept. I'm willing to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
Anybody have any questions from Mr. Jones? So move. Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Five in favor, thank you.
Thank you, and I also want to, um, tell Supervisor Fagundes, thank you for your friendship and your guidance in the five years I've been here, I really appreciate that, you may be welcome, and I hopefully have answered any questions you've had.
Okay, item B, uh, Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Curia Martinez, C E O. So before you this morning is the ordinance for your board's consideration that will modify and set the board's base salary and compensation as a percentage of the Superior Court judges. In two thousand nineteen, the board approved and passed an ordinance to set compensation for the board salaries. Port per ordinance that tied board compensation to a fixed percentage of the base salary of Superior Court judges. Currently, board compensation is at thirty-seven percent of the base salary of Superior Court judge with a cap of ninety thousand dollars. The board has sunset the term of the ordinance and has reached the cap allowed under the ordinance, resulting in the need for a new ordinance to set the board board salaries. The Superior Judge salaries have increased twice since the expiration of the county ordinance on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and November fourteenth, twenty twenty four. This has resulted in the board not receiving those increases that otherwise would be had the ordinance not expired. Adjusting the ordinance was not completed in the spring of twenty twenty four after the board directed staff to finish negotiations with county unions before beginning the endeavor of updating the board salary ordinance. Currently, um, using the current salary Superior Judges and the median salary of the Coffin Associate comparable counties, administration's recommendation would bring the board salary at forty-four percent of the salary of the Court Superior Court judges, which is a hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eighty. Under the proposed ordinance, the chairman would receive an additional five percent of the base salary, this methodology is consistent with county personnel rules of doing a five percent special salary upgrade when doing more duties assigned out of class. So the methodology for the proposed ordinance is as followed, so in twenty twenty-two, the county entered an agreement with Coffin Associates to conduct a classification and compensation study, the need for the study was necessary, given the loss compensation study the county had completed was in two thousand and sixteen. Since then, the state approved several minimum wage increases requi- uh, requiring the county to increase salaries of those only impacted, which caused significant compaction issues. Over the last decade, there has been two statutes that have gradually increased California statewide minimum wage to eight dollars per hour to sixteen dollars per hour. Currently, the statewide minimum wage will continue to increase by up to three point five percent each year, depending on inflation. Historically, only positions identified to be below the minimum wage were increased, leaving higher classifications stagnant, causing significant compaction issues across many classifications. The study provided recommendation on where county salary structure should be to maintain a competitive presence using twelve comparable agencies, nine counties out of those, uh, twelve agencies. The study recommended aligning salaries to the median of those peer counties, the proposed salary adjustments for the board reflect the same methodology, ensuring that the compensation aligns with neighboring county. Kings County population size is the most comparable to Madera County, whose board of supervisors is at a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine annual salary. They also have five chief of staff, one per each supervisor, whereas your board has no dedicated board staff representative. Additionally, the board of supervisors would not receive any additional, um, cost of living adjustments that have been offered to other unions as the board's, uh, compensation will be tied to the board's salaries. So, um, essentially, any kind of COLA would not be reflected in the board of supervisors' compensation. Historically, adjustments to board salaries have been infrequent, with modification occurring selectively over the past thirty-three years, prior to two thousand and nineteen, salaries were adjusted in nineteen ninety-one, two thousand and one, two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and two thousand and fourteen, with notable notable gaps in ten years between nineteen ninety-one and two thousand and one, since then, there have been more structured approach to pay adjustments with consist consistent cost of living increases to align with inflation. Per law, changes to the board supervisor salary must be approved by ordinance, the ordinance was first introduced on November twenty-sixth. If adopted today, um, it would be effective following sixty days after the adoption, which is February eighth of twenty twenty-four. With the established recommendation, it is to recommend waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number seven one one, modifying and setting the salary and compensation of the board of supervisors. Staff is prepared to discuss alternatives if your board, um, desires not to enact this proposed ordinance today. Staff and I are available for any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you, any comments from board?
Just for clarification, that's February of twenty twenty-five, correct?
February eighth of twenty twenty-five, thank you.
Good catch, because I even wrote down two eight twenty-four.
Sheriff Robinson?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if it's okay, I'd like to just add a comment. I I support as outlined by by Curia. You know, it's it's a, as an elected official, it's a tough spot to be in when you have to vote yourself a raise. Um, you know, Supervisor Fagundes, congratulations on a great sixteen years. You've always been super supportive of law enforcement and fire and public safety and all employees, quite frankly. Um, there's, I know that there's still some outstanding negotiations taking place, but, um, there's a lot of bargaining in it's now. And we're never going to get to a spot where there's probably never a negotiation taking place again, you know, at Kings County, and so I know your board held off for a long time on this because you wanted to see that all the other bargaining units had settled before you addressed this yourselves, and obviously with the ordinance expiring, it comes to the point where you just have to, uh, address it. Um, I hope that the other bargaining unit settles soon. You know, I know that there's always a good, bad, and ugly in negotiations, and, you know, I think that, uh, the strides that we've seen over the last few years um, with this board of supervisors and C E O Martinez, you know, we've come a long way in addressing salaries and compaction and overall benefit packages. Um, this is just part of the process, and and I think that overall, as a board, you guys have done an excellent job. I think by being competitive in a competitive market like this, you do get good quality candidates that are running for these board seats, and I think your election this last year, um, and that race was a good example of that, you had four great candidates that ran for that seat. Um, anybody who qualifies over the age of eighteen in the county of Kings can run for your job. And that's pretty fricking cool, but that job should be competitive, and so I absolutely support this. And I know that it it, uh, you have a wrestling moment with it because there's still some negotiations taking place. Um, but at this point, I think you just need to move forward, now rip the Band-Aid off, and obviously Carolyn's working hard on those negotiations, and I hope they settle soon, but I do support this, and I hope to see you move forward with it, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Or member comments?
I was chairman, I I'm going to thank Sheriff too, uh, a very honorable statement, appreciate, uh, his words of support, and again, just want to thank Carrie and the staff. Uh, was, um, I appreciate the highlighting of the history, and it makes me a little more comfortable in the conversation that we had um, during the reading of the, uh, or the waving and the first reading of the ordinance, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, make the motion to approve as presented.
They have a motion, we have a speaker, Mr. Devon.
Um, I'd just like to say one thing, um, one-
I'd just like to say one thing. One of the things that was recently brought up was longevity pay, and we all appreciate that. I think you all deserve longevity pay because the longer you're on the board, the more, I don't want to say expert, but expert you are, your, your expertise going up to the state and the fed level, your expertise is with the local community. I think that should be rewarded, and I don't, I know that it's hard for you to say that, but I think as an department head, we all got the longevity pay. You should also. So I'd like to throw that kink in there before you do make your motion. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate that, but I think any change.
Sorry, Richard, you're not going to get.
Why'd you have to highlight that? He deserves it. I appreciate that, but I know there's any modifications to the ordinance would delay this more because then you got to go back to day one, so I'll keep the motion as presented.
Second?
Second.
Second by supervisor Neves, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to board member announcements and reports. Oh, no, we got a study session. I'm sorry. And the study session is going to be on, receive an update on the new Boys and Girls Club team center located here in Hanford. Do we have anybody from them? You're from there? So out of my networking skills that I have with my community, I was at a function, and I ran into one of your board members, Billy Adams. And he said, well, I'm retired, but I got this new venture I want to do, and I want people to understand what we have here in Kings County. And so give me your card, and I'll see what I can do. So he gave me somebody's card at there, so I had our staff member reach out. So thank you for coming, and thank you for doing this. I think it's really good. People didn't know that this is here. I don't think we've had one in a long time, so I look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Matthew Boy, Deputy County Administrative Officer, Kings County Administration. So before your board this morning is a presentation for the Boys and Girls Club on their teen center here located in Hanford. And we do have Galen Quinzer, the C E O of the Boys and Girls Club, and Kristi Galvan, who is the Hanford Unit Director here, and we'll take it from here. So thank you very much. Appreciate you guys being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board, the supervisors. About a year and a half ago, the city of Hanford received a grant from the State Board of State and Community Corrections. And this is funding that comes through Prop sixty four tax on cannabis funding. And so this, this funding is to really allow communities to provide prevention funding for kids so that they don't get involved in drugs and other delinquent activity. And it was determined in Hanford that there's quite a bit of funding for younger kids through Department of Education at school sites, but not a lot for teenagers unless they're involved in after-school activities at the high school and middle school levels. So we decided to open a teen center in Hanford, and that is in Copark, right across Doughty from the Longfield Center. The, the club has a director, Kristi Galvan. She's been with Boys and Girls Clubs for about eight years now, and we're really delighted to have her. And so at this time, Kristi is going to tell you a little bit about the club here in Hanford.
Morning, Kristi. Thank you for coming.
Everyone, thank you. So we actually had our grand opening March thirtieth and really got to start seeing a lot of our teens start showing up throughout April. We are currently open Monday through Friday from three to seven. We do serve the ages twelve to eighteen. I have seen that we have been serving mainly like fourteen, sixteen years old at our center. Every day, we have a range of different activities that we do that I'll eventually kind of get into to paint a picture of what our teens do on a daily basis with us. If I could, please go to the next slide. So over at our club, it's been really important for us to really emphasize our mission statement, which is basically making all members that come to us the best versions of themselves that they can be with, you know, a staff leading them in the right direction. I have had quite a few teens already showing up and implementing that. Currently, I would say that we have about forty youth that have enrolled into my program, and then we've served about twenty of those throughout the month of October. Over at my center, we do try and have a really big emphasis on education and also pursuing their interests and, you know, sharing what the importance of knowledge is. So what that can kind of look like is every day at my program, for the first hour of the day, they come in and we focus on homework time. Depending if they have homework, if they don't, all staff are required to do an education-based activity. And then after that, we usually serve a snack, and then they jump into various different amounts of activities. It's really important over at my center that we do have, we offer STEM every single day, so that can range from science, tech, engineering, math. It really just depends what staff have scheduled, but every single day, members are hands-on with STEM.
What does STEM stand for?
STEM is Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. I know that it recently has also been STEM, Science, STEM, Engineering, Arts, and Math. So they kind of get to do those types of things every single day, just depending like I was sharing what's scheduled. The other thing that we really try to do throughout our programs is have what we call a hook, and those hooks are offering bigger field trips onto either college campuses, going to science museums, and really pushing that, you know, hey, if you come into our club and you guys are with us every day, you guys have the opportunity to go outside of Kings County and, you know, get to see different college campuses and just really depending on, you know, what they're interested in at that time. If I could, please go to the next slide. So every day, we do offer these main programs, is what we call them, and/or activities. So every day, we offer career exploration. So the program itself is called, sorry, I'm blanking on the actual names, Career Launch. So every day, these kids, they can come in, depending on where they're at. So obviously, we do serve twelve to eighteen. They can focus on resume building, possibly getting, going on volunteer, field trips, building up that resume, building up that experience. We've already have had one of our youths successfully get hired through Hanford, the city of Hanford, for their winter wonderland, and that was all through Career Launch. The other thing that we also offer every single day, at least an hour, is sports and fitness. So that ranges from basketball, outside activities. Recently, Hanford did dedicate Longfield, half of Longfield's gym to us, where they installed a curtain. So we now are able to go and utilize that gym space. Another thing that is actually really big at my site, as well as arts and crafts. I have a staff member that has really tried to implement that arts and crafts is a lot bigger than what it sounds. It's a form of self-expression. Our kids have already gone such a long ways in, in that, and we've actually been able to, you know, see who is struggling with mental health or who's not, just through the artwork that they've been showing us. So that's really different from me in the time that I've been with Boys and Girls Club, because now we're working with teens, and we're able to have those bigger projects and bigger ideas behind that. One of my favorite activities that we do every day that has became really important to all of our sites is surf prep. So what this is, is our students actually get to go out into the community and volunteer and make a difference. They can go anywhere from like I was sharing earlier, volunteering at different events. We have also gone to Thursday night markets in Hanford where we had teens get together and host a resource booth where they get to go and talk to the community about what Boys and Girls Club is and talking to other teens out there that are, you know, not sure of our program. So that was really exciting for us. We've gone into S P C A, you know, to spend time with animals, and then also possibly going to pop-up events that they would host. And this is just the beginning. We do have quite a few, a lot more, you know, resourcing and events that we would love to be a part of. And then if we could, please go to the next slide. With all that being said, I have, you know, in the short time that we've been open, there has been a youth that recently came to us that has really highlighted what it's means to be a Boys and Girls Club member, and I kind of wanted to take some time to talk a little bit about her and the impact that she's not only made on, that we've made on her, but the impact that she's made on our club. So we recently had a sixteen-year-old that attends Hanford West come to our program a few months ago. When she first started, she does come from a very large family. She was very soft-spoken, not very talkative, kind of blended into the crowd. But I kind of noticed that throughout her attendance, she was there every single day, Monday through Friday. Her siblings were in sports, so they would trickle in and out. But she was there every day, and throughout these short months, she really has made such a big difference from the first day that I've met her to now. And she actually motivated myself and my team to start what we're calling Member of the Month, and she was our first Member of the Month where she, her attendance was, you know, every single day she was showing up. She had a positive attitude, very, very involved with the community, very involved with all of our activities that we were doing. And now, to this day, she's actually helping lead teens in discussion of going to their next big field trip. She does want to take them to Disneyland, and I have shared that's a big goal. But another thing that we want to really try and do is go to a science museum pretty soon. So she's actually been the lead of talking to the teens and organizing what museum they would want to go to and how we can kind of take them and know that they would be learning that, that information there. So with that being said, she actually got nominated to be our first Member of the Month and has made such a big impact. Her, her next journey that I really want to push on her and push on all of our future Member of the Months is making a presentation to the city council and kind of just talking about Boys and Girls Club and/or any relevant issues that are going on, to really push the idea that our voices really do matter and have a really big impact. And she has really motivated me and inspired me that even our shy youth, you know, can say very impactful things and eventually find their voice and their strength in that. But that's all I have. Thank you so much.
No, thank you very much. We have any questions from the board? Yes. Supervisor Robinson?
Thank you so much for serving. I, I think this is one of the things that's been lacking in the community for a long time because when we're not doing positive, sometimes the other happens. How many staff members do you have?
I currently have three, but when I'm fully staffed, I have five.
And how does one go about? So if you have a, say, a twelve-year-old, where do you go? Do you go to the Longfield Center to apply? How do you do it?
So you can apply either online, or I actually do, you know, try and encourage parents to come into our facility and apply and grab a packet. That way, when they do come in, I usually go over the packet with them or a staff member, and we give them a tour and kind of go over the things I went over with you guys today on like what activities our child would be doing on a daily basis. So they can apply online, but I do recommend that they come in, in person to our facility on Copark.
One piece that I love is the give back piece, because I think that's been missed. And so just the fact that you're interacting with them in all these different areas, of course, the STEM, that's very important. But, but just seems like the youth at this point don't always realize that it's essential to give back. Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So you can handle forty youths now. How many more can you, can you take in?
I mean, honestly, I would hope for another forty.
Okay.
I, I personally don't know what our max would be in that facility. I'm hoping on average, we would serve about forty to fifty every day.
Very good. Well, thank you again for, for doing this. I know I sat on the school board for sixteen years, and one thing we did was we, we got the parents to volunteer at least two hours at the school. And we did that because we were trying to enhance the parents that weren't involved with the child education to be part of this child dedication. We gave them a free hour. We got sued by a parent that volunteered all the time because, you know, how dare you make me volunteer when I'm already volunteering? So it's important to, to get that message out, that it's important, you know, the children are developing from, you know, the day they're born till they're eighteen, and once they get to about twelve, they stop listening. So you got to get, get their attention and get them to understand. You got to get back to the community. You got to learn as much as you can while you can, and a free education is always the best. So thank you for what you're doing, and I thank Billy too, if you see him. I don't have his phone number or nothing. I just ran into him at Lush one night, and he was talking you guys up, so thank him as well. I really appreciate him getting in touch, and hopefully we get the word out, and you can double your capacity. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Thank you both for the presentation. Yeah, like Super Robinson said, the, the youth activity level, especially here at the county, I think we could, we could do more and we could do better. We have an excellent youth and county government day, so please stay in contact with your supervisor or the clerks. And that comes up in the early part of the year, but your age group level is the level of high school kids that they come here and they get to see a little bit of the, the board in action. And more importantly, they pair up with all our department heads, the sheriff, the fire chief, all of them, and they job shadow, and they get to go for half a day and go see government in action at the county level. And, and I think that's important for them to get that, that foundation early on. And so that, please be aware of that. Love to have you guys be, be a part of that. And then just listen to your presentation with your arts and crafts and wanting to give them something positive at the end of their work. Work with our clerks because we have a display case here that at least once a month, they're highlighting something there. And I, I think that a young kid might be honored to tell their, their parents or their family, oh, my, my, my artwork is on display. And then you guys should come and make a field trip to come visit that. And, and we could even possibly highlight them here too on this chair. And then lastly, on your field trips, the board, we did some good work a couple of years ago. The result is a beautiful Veterans Memorial that's in Corcoran down the road. Put that in, 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 in your thought for a possible field trip. We'd love to have you down there. Corcoran's my hometown, and I'd love to give those kids a personal tour. It's called the Five Pillars of Freedom, five twelve-foot statues. And we're very, we're all very proud of it, and we'd love to, you know, give the kids a real taste on from the veteran's side, and that's important foundation for him to have too. So thank you both.
Yeah, thank you, and I do really appreciate all those resources. Something I'm learning too, I'm originally from Tulare County, so here, building all these partnerships out here is really important to us. And honestly, what you shared is perfect for our kids, exactly aligned with the kind of field trips that we want to take them on, more hands-on experience. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, thank you again for coming and sharing your stories.
Thank you.
Okay, move on now to board member comments. You want to start off, Supervisor Robinson?
Okay, okay. Let's see. Last week, met with Jim Henderson, and just went over Public Works and some different priorities and, and that. Also met with one of the constituents regarding airboard issues, former Mayor Payton on the unhoused. Met with Supervisor-elect Robert Thayer, and also had a nice gift exchange yesterday with supervisors and staff. And I glad for my blanket and my, my candle.
How long did that game take?
Forever.
We're going to change it up next year. Forever, yeah. We had to change the rules. Hey, Supervisor Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I was last here, two weeks ago, you know, we were wrapping up Operation Gobble, and I, and I did say thank you to folks for the help. But I, I do, when we left, when I left that morning, we went to Avenow, then we went to Stratford to finish the second half of the turkey giveaways, and I just want to thank again the sheriff. When Jose Ramirez and I, when we wrapped up Avenow and we pulled into Stratford late, but when we pulled in, the sheriff, Public Works, O E S, they had everything set up. The tents, the turkeys, all the food. We just had to show up and give away the turkeys. Fun part. And I really appreciate that level of support, Sheriff. That meant a lot. And Jose was very happy too that day, so thank you. And, and then lastly, I just got to spend last week on vacation. That's why I wasn't here. But, you know, we work pretty much every Tuesday, so sometimes we miss when we go on vacation. But I had a great time back in Memphis, Tennessee, and taking my wife out there and celebrating the one-year anniversary. And we got to, I want to thank publicly Jeremy Pearson, his wife Diane. They did an excellent job. They, every couple of years, they put on their Facebook page, the first seventy people to sign up. And, and you pay, make a payments all year, but they put together this beautiful trip.
And, and you pay, make a payments all year, but they put together this beautiful trip to Graceland, staying on the property of Elvis Presley at the Guest House of Graceland. And they lined up meals. He did a full Christmas concert for everybody on our last night there. And he had a private tour of Graceland for us. We were in the house that night. And for Elvis fans, that's a special thing. And to see all his Christmas trees and the original Christmas decorations that are still on those trees and some of the presents that he gave to his daughter, you know, when she was little, they repackage them and put them under the trees. And you see her tricycle. It was, it was, it was a very nice time. And just the history of Memphis and we spent time with Paul and his wife, Missy West, the artist of the Five Pillars of Freedom, one of them. And they're always very, that southern hospitality there is on full display there. So good barbecue, good food and good times, so. Look forward to recharge for next.
Senator Fagundes.
Well, last week, we had a little issue with the driveway out of here on, with high-speed rail. And Dominic Trubisky and Jim Anderson took care of the situation and we handled it well. There's no problems getting things, people talking about it and getting together on it, so. And that, yesterday we had our Christmas party. It turned out good. A lot of fun, but neither was, no one of us knew we were good. But we all went home with something. I went home with a bag that I almost lost everything going out to the truck because it was so full. And it was tore out halfway. I looked like an idiot out there trying to pick things up. But nevertheless, and then again, I want to thank you guys, board, for helping me through this 16-year, it's been a learning product process. It's been good working with you guys and the office staff. Appreciate it, appreciate it very much. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart.
I'll give you a hug.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First five Kings County held their last meeting of 2024. Last Tuesday, the annual audit was reviewed and accepted. And along with the annual report that has to be forwarded up to the state, the commission also reviewed the annual evaluation that was submitted. And the achievement report was also reviewed. Then on Wednesday, the Calviva Public Policy held a meeting in Fresno with updates to health, education, health equity, medical management was also shared. We also reviewed the appeals and grievances and complaints that the organization receives. The operational guide was updated and reviewed. And we continue to try to push for the teledoc, telepsychiatry programs in order to get more patients involved with their healthcare. The system just isn't being embraced by the population. Some of them that like the follow-up from, you know, that don't have to go back and do another office visit. But we're looking for ways to try to expand the usage of the telemedicine component. So if you have any ideas, any, any questions or comments, let me know. And then on, also on the fifth, the Lamore College Paramedic Program Accreditation Team spent a couple of days on campus and met with the advisory committee. Very nice interacting with that group of medical professionals that train EMTs and, and paramedics literally across the nation. Some of these were from Philadelphia and not, not all local, they were all out of state accreditation, part of the accreditation team. And continue to visit many places portraying Santa Claus. So with that, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on now to board correspondence, carry on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the board received a resolution number 2408 for the Kings County Planning Commission on December 3rd regarding the conditional use permit. For the board also received the November 2024 Monthly Kings County Investment Pool Transaction Activity Report from the Director of Finance dated December 4th for upcoming events. Kings County Behavioral Health will host its Veteran Support Group tonight, December 10th, from 5:30, 7:30 at the Hanford Veterans Memorial Hall. Kings County Library will host its Family Craft Time this Thursday, December 12th, from 3:30 to 4:30. And its Cup of Joe and Conversation with Veterans this Saturday, December 14th, from 9:30 to 11:30. Both events will take place at the Corcoran Branch Library. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for December 17th. This will be our last meeting of the year. Next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 7th of 2025. Administration has five items, two with Cal PFA, Court, Care Court Fee Schedule, Public Safety Realignment and Post-Release Community Supervision Plan, Appointments to Multiple Boards. Behavioral Health has three items, Agreement on King's View for some programs and Amendment for Participation with Cal MHSA PICR Program. Finance has two items, An Investment Authority from the Director of Finance and Director of Finance 2025 Statement of Investment Policy. Health has three items, some agreements for area plan updates, some children's services, plan and budget modifications and Kings United Way Network Agreement. Human Resources has three items, some job specifications, some salary resolution updates on minimum wage impacts. And Human, Human Services Agency has two items, security agreements and Second Amendment for takeover for Triangle Courtyard Home Key Project. And Sheriff has three items, an annual military report and agreement with Motorola and some air support equipment purchases. That concludes my report, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on now to close session as presented. And we'll be back here, I think we have an assessment appeal hearing at two. And we'll see you next Tuesday, thank you very much. Hi Rebecca. Yes.